Testing, testing. Testing, testing. Nothing? Are you ready? Testing, 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 testing.
And Mr. Lilly, roll please.
Mayor McCoy. Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Farrar.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier. Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
Okay, next up is agenda approval. Any additions or subtractions to agenda now be the time, otherwise I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, second by Councilmember Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Brings us to summary reports. Councilmember reports. It looks like it's echo.
Echo, okay. A month later, yeah, I'm already ready for my next one. So the last echo meeting was focusing on the framework of creating a work plan or priorities for this upcoming year. Last year, I was very new. At the end, we focused a lot on, just a lot of bringing in presentations and stuff like that. And this time, we did a little, we decided as a group, we were going to focus on local planning and collaboration, state and federal legislature, and funding advocacy, and housing production and affordable housing.
Just the easy stuff.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, any other council member reports this evening?
Oh, one other thing. We're going to be creating a lot of boards to tackle all those.
All right. I think that's it for council member reports then. I believe it's, Chief, you got the next one? I'm going to introduce this sounds, looks like we have an oath of office for a new sergeant. Oh, that one's. All right. No worries. I didn't, yeah, I didn't see anybody in the crowd that looked like us, so. All right, well, that'll bring us to citizens communication. So that'll come right up. Looks like we have a couple people signed up, so I'll, I'll go through the spiel. I'll now open the meeting for citizens communications. Individuals limited three minutes, provide comments. Total time for comments shall exceed thirty minutes. This is an opportunity to hear from members of public and limited public forum, not an opportunity for extended comments or dialogue. Please refrain from derogatory remarks, personal attacks, campaign speeches, and applause. We desire to hear public comment, but the business of the city must proceed in orderly, timely manner. Please direct your comments to the mayor. Council may not be able to respond and may refer citizens to a staff member. If you have handouts, please give them to our clerk. Appreciate everybody for your understanding and for participating today. So do we have anybody online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so first up, we have Jessica Cole.
Hello, councilors. I'm Jessica Cole. I want to address the issue of prayer before council meetings and the legal concerns surrounding it. We know that initially prayer was proposed during meetings, but then it was suggested that it be turned to a moment of silence to be inclusive of all faiths and those with no faith. Some opposed a moment of silence stating that it would diminish the impact when observed for those who have passed away. Then it was suggested to hold prayer downstairs before meetings for the council, though this is not fully inclusive. It was stated that prayer downstairs is council-related and should allow for a quorum. We also know that having the city attorney look into the, into this costs taxpayer money as he is a contracted employee. The council is expected to be fiscally responsible, yet funds are being spent despite the attorney already stating that having a quorum present at prayer downstairs is legally problematic. His additional concerns include: One, a quorum at prayer puts the city at risk of violating open meeting laws. Two, prayer on city property with a quorum could be seen as establishing religion, which is constitutionally prohibited. Three, even a moment, even a moment of silence, though legal, presents First Amendment challenges if disrupted. Four, moving prayer out of council members, out of council chambers does not resolve these issues. Despite these warnings, last month, the council directed the city attorney to investigate case law further, even though only a minority supported this, and despite the associated costs. The citizens deserve transparency on this matter, and I am requesting an update. How does the council justify allowing prayer, an inherently religious act, while denying a pride proclamation which recognizes a legally protected class? If prayer is allowed, how will the council ensure fairness in recognizing other community acknowledgements, including those for protected classes? What is the current status of the legal review and what guidance has the attorney provided? How much has been spent on legal consultations for this issue so far? The public deserves answers on how their tax dollars are being used and whether this pursuit aligns with legal and fiscal responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up, we have Richard Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Management, good evening. You already know my name, so we'll go from there. I'm a longtime resident. I've sat where you sit. I have been on planning commission. I was assistant chief of the volunteer fire department. I've had a business in this town since 1979. And being a student of business, I stay with the Department of Commerce. I've received their emails as they appear on grants and those sort of things. And I received my latest one from the Department of Commerce in regard to continuation of business as usual, even with the newly elected government, or national president, or Donald Trump. In that letter, two of the paragraphs were a little disturbing, and I'll read them. For those who have state funding from Commerce, while there have been executive orders that are creating questions and uncertainty about programs, especially those related to equity, diversity, inclusion, and access, there is no current impact to state-funded programs. In bold letters, it says Commerce affirms our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and will continue to embody these principles in our work internally with staff and externally with our valued partners and stakeholders. Now I'll read you a quote from Dylan Housman from Daily Wire. It goes without saying that diversity, equity, inclusion is a scourge on our great country. It's a brain-dead, offensive concept that future generations will hopefully look back on with simultaneous disdain and bewilderment, bewilderment. Being a student of business, I know that if you go woke, you go broke, and that every state, or every city, or every county should be run as their business, not as for profit, but to perform for their constituents in a profit-minded way. In other words, getting the most out of each dollar. In doing that, if you're, if you're hiring on the basis of color, or gender, or likes, or dislikes, or any of those things, what does that have to do with anything? What I'm asking is that, that perhaps council draft or have the management draft an ordinance, keeping DEI out of this business, because it doesn't work. It's ineffective. I would suggest that perhaps that you adopt something such as DES, Desire, Ethics, and Suitability. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Lewis, we have one other person signed up to talk about the camping ordinance, so we'll move that to the public hearing if that's okay. Okay, any other public comments on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And like I said, there will be a public hearing on the ordinance that's coming up after consent. Which brings us to consent agenda. Council, anybody need to take anything off the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion by Councilmember Overholzer, second by Deputy Mayor Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six zero. Okay, that brings us to the aforementioned public hearing. Do we have any testimony previously that needs to be read in the record that hasn't been distributed?
Nothing that has not been distributed, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll go ahead and let Rob take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Stat presented this item back on January 6th, when the city council set the public hearing. We're prepared to discuss that presentation again if you wish. Absent that, we ask that the city council open up a public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, and then please consider and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Okay, with that, I'll now open the public hearing at 7:10 PM for public testimony. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comment on ordinance 2025-02, unauthorized encampments on public property. Please direct your comments to the mayor. I just also want to remind anybody that if you gave comments previously, you can still give comments again on this, so. We have one person signed up, Mr. David Terry, and anybody else is welcome to as well. So we'll. There you are. Lisa.
Hi, my name is David Terry, and I'm a Battleground resident. And I reviewed the public ordinance, and I wholeheartedly support it. I think it's comprehensive. It writes down exactly what our standards are going to be in Battleground for everybody to see and understand. It gives our city the tools to limit the effects of homelessness, you know, whatever ill effects there are, sanitation, drug use, crime, and preventing these effects will maintain morale and good reputation for our community. So I'm very much in favor. I do, however, think that it's not going to be the last time we work on this ordinance, because, you know, in my opinion, it's difficult to use fighting to move people. If you find someone, move them out of an encampment, what keeps them from moving to the, to the next encampment? That's a very difficult problem. You know, money's not really effective. So I think while we're, while we have a good start, it does, does the work humanely as well as efficiently. I'm pretty happy. I do also wanted to mention a couple of other things that we can do to kind of nip homelessness in the bud before we get to the point of, of encampment. You know, some of the major causes, housing affordability moves people into homelessness quickly. And obviously, if we're building housing appropriately at all economical levels, that is going to, you know, help stem the problem before it even gets started. Economic instability, low wages, or job loss. And again, bringing local jobs into this community, again, something we want to do anyway, we can, will help stop the home, a homeless problem that we might have in the future. So, things to think about when we're doing that. Mental health and substance issues. I know we work with other organizations on this, and I know we're planning to hand out stuff to people in, in, in encampments. I also think we could do more by supporting at, at-risk kids in school, and even supporting parents, having speakers come in and have parents, you know, give parents the tools they need to stop some of these problems. And there's also a lack of social support when somebody's family or their community networks that they rely on when it falls apart. But I think all these things together is going to make that problem less, less of a problem as well. So anyway, in short, great ordinance, great start, and I hope we're thinking about the other things when we, when we do our other planning. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lewis, we have one other person signed up to talk about the camping ordinance, so we'll move that to the public hearing if that's okay. Okay, any other public comments on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. And like I said, there will be a public hearing on the ordinance that's coming up after consent. Which brings us to consent agenda. Council, anybody need to take anything off the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion by Councilmember Overholzer, second by Deputy Mayor Bowman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six zero. Okay, that brings us to the aforementioned public hearing. Do we have any testimony previously that needs to be read in the record that hasn't been distributed?
Nothing that has not been distributed, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll go ahead and let Rob take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Stat presented this item back on January 6th, when the city council set the public hearing. We're prepared to discuss that presentation again if you wish. Absent that, we ask that the city council open up a public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, and then please consider and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Okay, with that, I'll now open the public hearing at 7:10 PM for public testimony. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comment on ordinance 2025-02, unauthorized encampments on public property. Please direct your comments to the mayor. I just also want to remind anybody that if you gave comments previously, you can still give comments again on this, so. We have one person signed up, Mr. David Terry, and anybody else is welcome to as well. So we'll. There you are. Lisa.
Hi, my name is David Terry, and I'm a Battleground resident. And I reviewed the public ordinance, and I wholeheartedly support it. I think it's comprehensive. It writes down exactly what our standards are going to be in Battleground for everybody to see and understand. It gives our city the tools to limit the effects of homelessness, you know, whatever ill effects there are, sanitation, drug use, crime, and preventing these effects will maintain morale and good reputation for our community. So I'm very much in favor. I do, however, think that it's not going to be the last time we work on this ordinance, because, you know, in my opinion, it's difficult to use fighting to move people. If you find someone, move them out of an encampment, what keeps them from moving to the, to the next encampment? That's a very difficult problem. You know, money's not really effective. So I think while we're, while we have a good start, it does, does the work humanely as well as efficiently. I'm pretty happy. I do also wanted to mention a couple of other things that we can do to kind of nip homelessness in the bud before we get to the point of, of encampment. You know, some of the major causes, housing affordability moves people into homelessness quickly. And obviously, if we're building housing appropriately at all economical levels, that is going to, you know, help stem the problem before it even gets started. Economic instability, low wages, or job loss. And again, bringing local jobs into this community, again, something we want to do anyway, we can, will help stop the home, a homeless problem that we might have in the future. So, things to think about when we're doing that. Mental health and substance issues. I know we work with other organizations on this, and I know we're planning to hand out stuff to people in, 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 in encampments. I also think we could do more by supporting at, at-risk kids in school, and even supporting parents, having speakers come in and have parents, you know, give parents the tools they need to stop some of these problems. And there's also a lack of social support when somebody's family or their community networks that they rely on when it falls apart. But I think all these things together is going to make that problem less, less of a problem as well. So anyway, in short, great ordinance, great start, and I hope we're thinking about the other things when we, when we do our other planning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to give testimony on this ordinance? And please state your name.
Richard Lewis. I do endorse this ordinance as well. I had an issue on my own commercial property that I had to deal with myself only because the police and also Public Works were basically hand-tied from doing anything. And I didn't mind taking care of it myself. It was a lot of work for an old man, so I do endorse this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:14.
PM, and if we could, at this point, read the title, please? We can go on to questions and do that before the vote.
An ordinance of the City of Battleground, Washington prohibiting camping on public property, establishing penalties for violations thereof, and providing for separability and an effective date.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2025-02, unauthorized encampments on public property?
I'm sorry, was that a second? I'd like to give council a chance to ask questions, though, if we have it or have comment before we take a vote. So are there any questions up here, any comments? No? All right, talkative group. Everybody's hungry, wants to go home for dinner? But in all, in all seriousness, this is a very serious issue. I, I think the speaker said it well. This is one part of a multifaceted approach to homelessness, and it is a small part. And I see that there's even another lawsuit coming out to stay the current ordinance down and grants pass, so. Who knows where we end up, but I thank staff for working on this, getting this done, and getting legal through with it. So do appreciate that. So with that said, council, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Which brings us to the business portion. Ms. Leto?
Good evening, council. Tonight, we're back with you continuing our discussion for the processing of the winter's annexation. At the last meeting on January 21st, council gave us the direction to go ahead and proceed with the annexation boundaries as proposed. We have now received the 60% petition application form, so we're at the second step in the process, and we are asking council this evening to please set a public hearing date for March 3rd to proceed with the annexation.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move and set a public hearing date for March 3rd, city council meeting to receive public testimony on a proposed winter's annexation request.
Second. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, second by Councilmember Overholzer to set a public hearing for the March 3rd city council meeting for the proposed winter's annexation. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries six zero. Okay. And normally, we would have done this interview portion first, but just to give our staff some time, so they may be able to take off if so. So now we're going to start the position for interviews. What we're going to do is I'm going to kind of give everybody a heads up on how it's going to go. Then we will sequester the first three people in the back room, so you don't get to hear the questions and cheat on the test. And then we will bring individually somebody out in order, I think it's alphabetical order by last name. So I'll start the questions, and then it will just go to my right. There will be six questions. Thirty minutes max. We will have. We will have a timer up of that thirty minutes to kind of give you an idea for the candidates to try to keep your time within line. If there is time, I'll give you a chance at the end to give a closing or touch on anything that, that you didn't get, get to talk about. Did I miss anything, Liz? I think that's about it. So these are the four candidates we selected during special meeting on January 21st. We have a little table here. So our deputy mayor, I believe, is going to escort the first three. Is that correct? I'm sorry, deputy city manager? I'm sorry for the demotion. I'm sure Shane will change, change paychecks with you. So Ryan Heasley will be the first person to be interviewed. And then the other three, if you would please accompany Mr. Farrar to the back conference room.
Yes. It should be ready. There's water and.
Yeah, please have a seat.
Can you hear me?
You're all good. Council, your questions are at the pink tab on the interview packet. And so I have by my clock seven twenty-one. So we'll go ahead and get started. So first one's pretty easy. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, Ryan.
All right. My name is Ryan Heasley. I'm a lifelong resident of Battleground. I lived here my whole life. When I was a kid, and there was like 3,000 people here, and now there's 23,000 people here about. I'm a product of Battleground Public Schools. I went to Clark College. I was an event planner for the ASEC, and I got a taste of leadership doing that. Then I went to Washington State University Vancouver, and I worked for the Child Development Program. And my cohort voted me in to be the representative, senior representative for their education committee. And then I graduated, and I became a teacher. I've been working at Tewks Valley Middle School for the last thirteen years. I've had over a thousand students, and I've worked with some really great families in our community. We have some of the, well, you guys know, we have some of the best kids in our community, best families in our community. And it just, it's been a blessing to live here, and yeah, I've done a lot of stuff as a teacher and been in several different community committees.
What is your vision for short-term and long-term growth for Battleground?
That's a great question. As cheesy as it sounds, my vision for Battleground would be to foster a community that's harmonious, inclusive, and connected, so that residents feel supported, heard, and empowered. I envision a battleground that, you know, supports responsible growth while maintaining that special charm that makes Battleground a special place to live. I want to create opportunities for people, whether it be economic, social, or educational, just giving them what they need to thrive in our community. Yeah, I want to give them what they need. You know, might be partnerships with different groups, like the police force, or Rock Solid, T Center, or even Battleground Senior Center, the senior citizens. Rock Solid, T V Center, or even Battleground Senior Center, the the senior citizens. Um just anything that's going to really build a strong foundations for our community and uh really just so that people can feel a develop that sense of belonging, ownership, and pride.
Sorry. Did you hear that? Okay. Now let me do that for no YouTube. I know they're not going to hear it. So let me redo that. Sorry, my mic was off. Uh what are some of the priorities you would want to focus on for Battleground?
Well, my priorities will be my constituents' priorities. Um and so if people are coming here and they're telling us, you know, we need this or that, that's what we we should probably focus on. Um I'm guided by my values, integrity, respect, empathy. Um but in the back of my mind, I'm always thinking about different things, obviously. Um my mind is never is never off. It's always going. Um and just how I am as a person. Um but as a I'm always thinking about, you know, how can we make this community a better place? So my priorities personally would be fiscal responsibility. Uh I'm a taxpayer too, just like you all are. Um this is, we're dealing with taxpayers' money, and so we had to make sure that we're, you know, using our taxpayers taxpayers' money um correctly and you know, as if it's our own. Um and and infrastructure would be another priority for me, making sure our roads are up to par and our sidewalks are um good. Um and making sure that our infrastructure is working for Battleground's residents. Um you know, we talk a lot about, you know, light rail and all that. And you know, light rail might be good for people of Portland and Vancouver, but is it really going to be good for people of Battleground? Probably not, right? And so I would, you know, uh really focus on the people of Battleground and work for um Battleground's priorities. Um so infrastructure, um responsible growth, making sure that we're not just building everywhere. Um I'm just a humble teacher. I'm not like, I don't have any special interests or anything. I'm not a real estate agent. Um I'm not a developer. I'm not a builder or anything. So I'm just, you know, I'm just looking out for what's going to you the better my community, my hometown. Uh and so I would just, you know, advocate for responsible growth and making sure that we are growing um with just our future in mind and not so much what's going to be beneficial for a few builders' pocketbooks, but what's going to be beneficial for the long term Battleground, not like five years from now, but maybe fifty five years from now. Um and safety, safety is like my probably my parent, like my my biggest priority is this as a as a teacher especially. Um I I I think about the the safety of my students day and night. Um I think about crosswalks. I think about visibility. I think about intersections. I think about uh I get anxiety just thinking about intersections and about how um I just talked to my mom just, you know, just tonight on our way here about you can just anticipate there's going to be somebody who's going to run a red light. And every time you are, you know, you go to five oh three and On Store, if you just assume someone's going to run a red light. And so I would just advocate that um we, you know, we support our police officers and we have all these laws and that we support our police officers and we really just um give them the tools and the the respect to carry out those laws and really um you know, communicate with the public, of course, um so that they they know that these laws are going to be upheld. Um because the people of Battleground, they they respect laws. They're they're about law and order. They're not, they're 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 smart people. Um as as a teacher, um I I have a lot, my students respect me because they they have, they know the rules, but they understand the context and the rationale for those rules. And so they know when I'm going to come down hard on them. They know why it's going to come down, you know? Um and they respect that. So I think if we um give people the rationale for why we're upholding these laws, why we're um, you know, citing them, why the police officers need to um come down hard on people for speeding or running red lights. Um I think that's something we need to do. So safety is a big one for me. Um and then I don't want to end on a negative note. So I would say uh tradition uh is another priority of mine. Uh I'm a sucker for nostalgia. Uh again, cheesy, I know, but um um tradition, anything that we can do that's going to be like a cheap or inexpensive, I should say, uh way to bring people joy in Battleground, like the seasons greeting thing, I'm sorry, the seasons greeting thing uh in across Battleground, the the banner. Uh I think that's a great thing for people. Um walking around Camison, Ridgefield, I see like the the hanging baskets in the springtime. That's pretty inexpensive. It brings people joy. Uh we can work with our Bauran High School students. They need the amazing hanging baskets. You can, you know, bring something like that, bring some color to Battleground. I can go on and on about priorities, but if if everything's a priority, then nothing is. So.
Hi, Ryan. Eric here. Um how have you been involved with and given back to the city of Battleground?
Well, um I'm a teacher, so I work for free. Uh I I shouldn't say that. I work many hours for free, you know? Um and I uh I'm on the city planning commission. I've been doing that since uh June, and that's been a really um great way to learn and um about the codes and all the laws and policies and whatnot. Um I have uh I volunteered for um my school's P T O, Parent Teacher Organization. Um last year, I contacted um three hundred businesses in the area, not just Battleground, but I contacted Portland too, because, you know, I'm not a fan of Portland. Sorry, Portland people, if you're here. Um but like I contacted Portland too, just asking for money and um I I they gave my school like six thousand dollars. And so um this year, the P T O asked me if I could um uh help be like the one of the um, I'm not sure they called it business. I'm not sure what they call it, some kind of committee. And I was like, sure, let's do it. And so I I helped um them and I doubled that and I reached out to like six hundred businesses. Um so I, that's how I do it. I I set a goal and then I just do it. Um so, yeah. Um I also give back to the city by um mm helping out by communicating with uh, well, I don't want to know if I should say this, but uh I won't say it. Never mind. I'll pass on that one. Hmm, that's about it, yeah.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
What are some of the biggest challenges facing the city of Battleground, in your opinion?
Challenges? Yeah, there are a few. Um I would say growing, we're just growing um at quite a big pace, fast pace. People want to move here. It's a great place to live. We all know that. Um and I think we need to make sure that we're not growing too fast. Um but I think the city has a plan and I'm not too worried about that, but I think the biggest challenge I think our city has is communication. I hate to say it, but our Facebook page for the city has like ten thousand followers, which is great. But the Battleground Washington Facebook page has like thirty five thousand followers. Um most people probably wouldn't see what's on the city Facebook page if it weren't for Cherish reposting. So you should thank Cherish because she's getting the messages out. So I would say communication. Um hold on, any water? Um also sometimes this, I think the city has really good like intense like and they the city means well when they they fix an intersection or they add a median. But sometimes the the communication is delayed. So like, for example, the median over down by um is it Scotten and Southwest Twentieth?
Twentieth and Eaton?
Eaton, yeah.
Right in between, yep.
Yeah, Eaton, yeah, the median. So that had a purpose, but um it was not communicated with the public um until after people started complaining about it. And um if they understood the rationale for it ahead of time, I think that you would have got um more support on it. But like the, you did, when sometimes you do, um the, you guys do a really good, great job. I say you guys, I mean like the city in general. You know, whoever doing the Facebook page, the um safe, the city Facebook page is a really great job. Um uh when you guys um mentioned the the new four-way stops and you say to help with safety. Great. You have a rationale. You have a timeline. Great. Um as long as, I think you you provide context, provide a rationale and some timeline, I think you're going to get people on your side. So you've got to get people on your side. I think the city oftentimes will be um reactive instead of proactive. And so that's what I would say is our biggest challenge. Yeah.
Thank you. First, thanks for serving on the planning commission.
Yeah.
I know that's a, that's a big thing, uh trying to get people to serve there. So your last question, I've got a a two-part.
Okay.
Going to be um so I'll ask you the first part. Are there any regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise as applicable to the city council? I'll give you a couple of examples, transportation, water supply, human services, water quality, fiscal management, solid waste parks, open space. There's a bunch. So are there any in particular that you have interest in or an expertise? Yeah, cool.
Expertise? Probably not. Um I'm I'm just a teacher. Uh but I would say I read a lot and I I'm I'm always watching the news, so like I'm always paying attention to things. So like I'm I'm really very much aware of things. I I care a lot about our community. Uh so like everything is that's going on, I care about a lot. Um and I want what's best for our community. It's it's my hometown and I really, I want what's best for our community. I want um what's safe for our kids. I want what's safe um for our our people. I I I really care. Um as for interests, yeah, all of that. Uh I'm into that kind of stuff. I'm into policies. I'm into um, you know, making sure things are safe. I'm into all that.
Okay. And the second part, this is um if appointed, uh this position, um the term of it expires in December thirty first. So if appointed, are you planning on running to retain this position this year?
Yeah, I I hope so. If the city feels like I'm doing a great job and if you guys think I'm doing a good job, yeah, for sure. Um if I'm not doing a good job, then I probably wouldn't. But I I anticipate I'm doing a really good job. So yes, of course.
So the the follow-up to that, if I ask if appointed, if not, would you consider running too?
Hmm. Maybe, yeah.
Okay, good. It's it's always good to to get new people involved and this process does that. And so people that are interested and involved and and want to serve, so appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, first, again, thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Uh for applying, going to this process. So at this point, uh you have some time left. So if you have any uh closing comments or anything that maybe we didn't ask that you want to cover or anything you want to expound upon, now would be the time?
Can I ask you questions?
You, the time is yours.
I'm curious. Uh what are you each most um proud of as um city council people, like individually?
What are we most proud of?
Like as what have you contributed to the city? Their accomplishments?
Not with tough questions. We'll start with Cherish.
So we've done many things. Um one thing that I am pretty proud of is several years ago, when we looked at our utility rates, I noticed that there wasn't a utility rate for seniors or people who are disabled. And um I, we worked with uh the, with Megan, and we were able to implement a program mirroring it off of what the county does for the um assessor's office. And so how many people did we get in the program? Sorry, calling you out.
I think last I heard it was around sixty four seniors.
Okay. See, I mean, it's not a huge number, but it does make me feel good knowing that it's we're able to yeah, that we didn't have a program before we were able to implement that and we're helping sixty seniors with their utility tax rate.
But they talk too. I know like the Battleground senior citizens, the little meetings they have like once a month. Is it the first Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh yeah, they talk. And so it it'll expand. That's great. Thank you.
So for me, um I've been here for a while and have seen us when we were fiscally um had some real challenges and and didn't know where we're where money was going to come from and and um one of the things that we focused on was our number one priority for years and is still our number one priority was public safety.
Yes.
And so um we fully funded our our police. Uh we've we've increased our police department by quite a bit from from where it was when I first got onto council. And um the second part of that was our partnership with uh Fire District Three and um that's the annexation into Fire District Three is what has put our city and the policies that we put into place in a situation where one of the few cities in southwest Washington that is not having fiscal challenges right now is because we we were able to partner and and develop those relationships and look out for the money that was being spent by our community on these services and give them a better product. Um a more sustainable product and also be able to help us financially as a city that now we can do things like parks and open space and those things that that um that the community enjoys. So it's been, that's a long process, though. It takes a long time to 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 do those things and but that for me has been probably one of the biggest things.
Thank you.
And I'm hopeful that the next thing is our best thing, but mostly just having a council that's cordial to each other even when we disagree. And when we get off this dais, that we can look each other in the eye. Um lost that fight and see you tomorrow and work together for the city tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And for me, I I think that's real important and that's a testimony to everybody up here, uh not me, so.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right, well, I have, did anybody else? Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was just gonna, you kind of piggyback on you as far as it's really not one particular thing. We all work as a team and I I take pride in being able to have those discussions with people and get their point of views. And sometimes I realize I didn't think that way. So it helps me when I talk to these people. So to me, it's a group thing. And I will say, I heard somebody say when they run again is because the first time you're just playing catch up, right? You're learning everything and then you get the motivation that you you see how to move and things that you missed before that you're not ready yet to stop. So I think it's just constantly evolving, talking with each other, getting people's perspective. So it's not, for me, it's not a personal thing that I can say. I'm really proud of the group up here and how we represent the city. That's what, that's what I'm most proud of.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm I think everyone else
We're the new ones. We're the new ones. I'm just thankful to have the opportunity to be up here and and be a voice and I get to talk to the citizens and hear their concerns in their neighborhoods and talking about education is we have a lot of citizens out there who are, you know, of all ages that aren't aware that we have these public meetings and that they can come and speak. And I love the opportunity to tell them, hey, if you've got concerns, it's gonna, you know, that's coming down on the agenda. Here's our website. Here's where you can go to. Um please email us, voice your concerns, so because we can't be a voice for the citizens if we don't know what their concerns are.
That's right.
And so I really love that opportunity to educate the public and really hear what their concerns are. And regardless, I mean, I love how there's all all of us up here represent, you know, um different backgrounds and personalities and and concerns of the citizens. So yeah, I'm just really thankful for that opportunity. Oh, and I put, I got to get the little flashy light on Four Corners. There was a major accidents going on on um Twentieth and Eaton. I I mean, some close fatalities and one fatality. So I know it's probably not that big of a deal, but
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I was excited when I asked for it and yeah.
More of those. Well, one more thing. Um, I just have another thing. Uh, in the summertime, we do, um, you guys do the, um, National Night Out, which is amazing. And it's always really, um, popular and it's chaotic because everyone loves it, right? What if you harness that energy and, um, expand it a little more, maybe like once a month, do like pop with a cop? You know, you guys remember you did like coffee, pre-pandemic, you guys did, uh, uh, coffee talk with a cop or something. What if you did like pop with a cop and then it was more like, uh, a family get-together? You can have like sodas in a cooler, something cheap, um, sodas or otter pops or something, you know, like once a month.
Very cool.
Yeah.
All right, Ryan. Well, again, thank you so much for applying. Appreciate it. Uh, I have seven forty-four. So we'll go ahead and close the floor for Ryan's interview. And, uh, bring up next, you're welcome. You can stay in the audience.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Your test is over. You can't cheat. So you're. But I did like how you gave us the work. I mean, you know, I mean, right, teachers. I'm married to one and it's, I still don't see it coming. That was a catching error. Error two, error two. Oh.
Sorry, Mark. No.
Yeah. HR is trying to figure out how the L and I claim is going to be processed.
Thank you.
Welcome, Jeannie.
Thank you. Testing.
Okay. So you know, um, I kind of gave you the heads up on how this is going to go. So I have seven forty-six. We'll go ahead and get you started. And, um, we'll go ahead and open the floor for your interview. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and your background.
I'm Jeannie Kipers. I've been in battleground for about ten years, moved here permanently in, uh, twenty eighteen. Um, and I'm just excited to apply for this position. Thank you for the opportunity. I hope you all have a copy of the additional documentation I provided. As you know, the application was brief. And obviously I have a little background or little, a few years behind me. So I have some experience, uh, that I thought maybe would be worthwhile putting in some additional information for you. Um, and so I would ask if you have any questions on that. And I think otherwise I'm, I'm ready to take your questions.
What is your vision for short-term and long-term growth for Battleground?
Growth?
Yes.
Um, actually, when I thought about, you know, that was one of the, the questions in the document we received. And I thought about that and I actually have about six points on my vision. Uh, and when you talk about specifically growth, um, I, I see two pieces to that. One being the downtown area. Uh, I was excited to learn about the revitalization project. I don't know a lot of details about it, but, um, having, you know, come into the community about fifteen years ago, visiting and seeing what the downtown was like and having a vision for what it could be. I was excited to think, wow, they're, they're moving forward. They're doing some things. So when I attended the meeting about the project, it was fun to hear that, um, the ideas and the plans that they have. And I thought, I loved how they tied, uh, the Old Town Battleground and the Downtown Battleground. I think that's really important as well. And then with all the additional things that you're working on, uh, for road projects, the Grace Avenue project, all that ties together. As a previous business owner myself, um, and knowing the importance of what the downtown looks like and how that feels when people come into the community. It's, I think it's really important to have it feel like people want to come in, like there's, it's a place for community activities. It's a place for events and, um, it's a place where people feel proud to be there. That we look like we take care of our, our space. And when we look like we take care of our space, we look like we take care of our people. So, um, that was an important one to me. And so I think as we continue to grow and bring more people in for um, other communities, people that move here, they're going to want the same thing, right? There, if they want to move into a small community that doesn't have anything, they're not going to come to Battleground. They're going to not even be in the city. So I think that that's a, a really important piece. The other thing I think that's important about, um, being able to handle growth in the future is the taxation. You know, I think there's definitely concern around the need for additional tax dollars with budget impacts. And I don't think that that can just land on the, the seniors who live in homes here. I think we have to not put that burden just on residents, but I think we need to look at bringing more, uh, business into the community um, and have more commercial taxation. So those are probably my two points specific to growth.
Um, what are some of the priorities you would want to focus on for Battleground?
I think that uh, two things that, you know, coming into a community and you, you hear the folklore, you don't necessarily, uh, know all the details behind, uh, why decisions are made, the, the way they're made. And so that was part of the reason I wanted to participate in Battleground University was to learn more about the background. And that's the other reason I want to be part of the council is to be able to understand why decisions are made. I'm not one to complain, um, if I am not going to be in a position of doing something and being able to step in and make a difference. So, um, when I think about priorities, um, I, I've have, um, I've heard, I've had sense that there as businesses come into the community, um, and as there's new development for homes and such, that permitting is an issue. Length of time to get permits is an issue. And so I'd like to understand what's the root cause of that? Is there, are there things that, and I'm sure you all have the answer to this, but are there things that we could be doing to change that? I think that if a community has a reputation of being difficult to get into, difficult to work with, then that's something that needs to be addressed. And so that would be a priority for me to at least learn about and understand and then make a difference if I can. The other thing I think, um, a priority is there's so much change that we anticipate, um, coming. We obviously have a new, uh, government leaders coming on. We don't really know what things are going to be like in the next six months, the next couple of years. Six hours, exactly. And I think that, um, as, uh, I've seen a lot of good progress in the community, very positive things happening just since I lived here. And so I'm proud of that. And I think that the things that I've learned, again, this was Battleground University, learning more about, the communications and, uh, how things are publicized. Those are important to, um, develop our, our reputation of who we are so that we can be trusted uh, as good decision makers. And I think we continue to build our relationship with the community as a council is important. Because we have to continue to grow and change and the community will continue to grow and change. And we just have to do that together. There's going to be people who are happy about things and there's going to be people who aren't. And we just have to continue to do our best to make the right decisions for the, for the greater good.
Hi, Jeannie.
Hi.
Here. My question, how have you been involved with and given back to the city of Battleground?
Well, that's a good question. Frankly, uh, when I moved here, I was commuting full-time into Portland for my, for my job. Uh, and so then, and I did that for about eight years and then COVID. So then I was housebound like everyone else, um, and continued to work. Then I retired and so I've taken a break. So in terms of actually getting involved in any of the committees or any of the commissions, I have not been, uh, involved in any, uh, of those opportunities yet. But in terms of giving back, what I, what I do like to do is I'm involved with my church. Uh, we, we do something called Love Battleground where we go out and do community projects, uh, specifically for people who are, um, uh, you know, are not able to maybe take care of their property or they need help with projects in their home. And so we take a couple of weekends a year where we just go in and we just do what we can to help people with the things that they need done. So I've been involved with that. So that's probably my give back to the community at this point in time. Otherwise I try to get involved with, with my grandchildren and they're an important part of this community.
Hi, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
My question to you is what are the biggest challenges facing the city of Battleground?
The biggest challenges? Um, well, I, again, I'd say budget, not knowing. Uh, I think, uh, from what I've learned, I feel that I've seen that the budget has been well managed. I understand the difficulties with, uh, dealing with deferred maintenance that may happen, um, in, and how you have to keep up with those things, um, and that you don't want to get behind, um, on keeping things up. We also have a lot of growth going on, so projecting to what we might need to take care of in the future. How to plan for, um, what we may need as the community continues to grow, as things change. The other side of that is we don't necessarily know what the impacts are going to be from a state level or uh, federal level and what might get pushed back to a city that hadn't been previously, uh, city requirement. So taking care of our citizens and having a, a budget that we need to, um, be fiscally responsible for and hold, um, you know, we're trying to do the, I always think about trying to be the best steward of the money that our taxpayers pay us. So.
Right. I got a two-part question for you. So the first part, are there any regional issues or forms in which you have a particular interest? Or expertise as applicable to the city council? For example, transportation, water supply, human services, water quality, fiscal management, solid waste parks and open space, et cetera.
In previous, uh, experience, I was involved with, uh, the company I was involved with, we purchased, we actually did, uh, property trade with the school district. And that required, uh, part of the deal was to, to build out a new playground for them. And so it kind of got us, got me involved in, um, that aspect of, um, school property and city property. We were working with city and then also our private, uh, privately owned property in the community. I don't have any regional experience, um, in any of those, but, um, I understand, um, the impact from a, a, um, county standpoint. And then the impact, uh, on the local communities. So, you know, comprehensive planning and that kind of thing.
Perfect. And then the second part of this question, if appointed or, or not, are you planning on filing to run to retain this position?
I'm planning to, to run. I look at this like a, like a job. Basically, I feel like I, I have three months and you have three months to, to either be happy with me or be happy with you. But my, my intent going in is that it's a job and, and, um, you know, I, that's how I look at it. So.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jeannie. Um, you do have some time left. So now as an opportunity for you to touch on anything, maybe that you didn't get to, uh, or if you had any closing statement or anything else, um, a question that you didn't got to answer enough or whatever, the time is yours.
Thank you. I thi- I think I provided a lot of information, uh, a lot of background. I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity. I, I didn't think that this was something I'd ever really be stepping into. I'm surprised I'm sitting here right now, quite frankly, uh, as is my family. And, and yet it was something that over the years I just would briefly think, oh, city council, that might be interesting. But never was really serious about it. But I have to admit that the, the more I stepped into it and, uh, saw the similarities in, um, the corporate world that I lived in, um, and worked in, there it, there's differences, but there's similarities, right? The company I worked for, we were a not-for-profit taxpaying organization. And we sold Medicare products and so Medicare required us, you know, we, we were a government product. And so we had government regulations to follow. So there were a lot of things that, um, that makes sense to me, even though I may not, uh, yet know all the details about how something works. I get the general gist of how, uh, we have to work around those and, and how to dig into that kind of thing and expectations. Um, there were also times, uh, there was a point in the past where, um, one of the things I did was work with the state of Idaho on a, um, workforce development grant. And I submitted the grant on behalf of our company. We, we were awarded it. And we, we, we got about $250,000, which was a good amount of money at that point in time. And we were able to use that for training, um, for the employees that we were hiring as a result of the growth of the company in that community. So that was a big boost to the community and it was a big boost to obviously, uh, help the company get employees in place. So I know that in a position like this, you get to touch on a lot of different aspects of, um, needs and lots of different opportunities to make things work. Um, I also understand that things can move slowly and, um, you have to wait for the right amount of time to, for things to fall in place and we have protocols to follow. So it's an interesting challenge that I'm, I'm excited to kind of step back into it.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I think a lot of us want, don't think we ever would have been up here. So that's not an uncommon thing. So I thank you again for applying and, uh, we'll go ahead and close the floor for your interview and thank you so much. So I have eight oh one for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Now we start the Davids. Onto the Davids. Does anybody need a break? Huh? Yeah, five-minute break. Uh, David Palmer comes out. We'll reconvene at eight oh six. Yeah. All right, I got 8:06. So we'll call the meeting back to order. Welcome, Mr. Palmer.
Good evening.
So, uh, kind of gave you the rundown of how this is going to go. So there's nothing new to add to that. So we'll just let you open it up. Tell us a little bit about yourself, your background.
Okay, great. Well, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak with everyone tonight. Um, I'm an area native. So I've, uh, lived within 15 minutes of right here for the last 42 years. Um, I grew up here. My first job was in town here, went to school here. Now my kids are going to school here and getting jobs here. And the cycle continues. Um, I grew up outside of town when this town was really small. Cause 42 years ago, it was a pretty small town. Uh, I remember when the McDonald's opened, that was a big earth-changing event. Uh, especially as somebody in middle school at the time. So anyway, uh, been a part of the community for a long time. Uh, um, privileged to be serving on the planning commission, uh, to help the city with some of the, uh, land use and, um, planning related issues and helping to advise the council on some of those decisions. Uh, looking forward to the upcoming comprehensive plan update this year. And generally just trying to understand as much as I can of all sorts of the, the inner machinery of the, the city and how it works.
What is your vision for short-term and long-term growth for Battleground?
My vision for short-term and long-term growth, growth is multifaceted, like everything that the city does. You know, everything is a complex machine, as I just said. Um, I think short-term, uh, we need to pay attention to some of the infrastructure that's deteriorating faster than it's being budgeted to, um, be taken care of. You know, just, um, you know, look at Parkway and Main Street, you know, main intersection that really is the, you know, the north-south dividing line of our city. And it looks like, it looks like it's long past needing to be repaired. Um, I have concerns that there are things like that that are going to just get more expensive as time goes on and they continue to be deferred. Um, whereas the, with the Transportation Benefit District, the city enacted in 2014, um, you know, there are mechanisms to recover more funds than the million dollars that's currently budgeted. Uh, so I'm concerned about things that are already expensive not getting away from us. Uh, but I also think for the future, you need to be planning in more proactive. So instead of, um, focusing on, I mean, there, there've been some great projects that have been done around here. Uh, but I think that the next thing is going to have to do with affordable housing, uh, something we were looking at at the planning commission. And just recognizing that there, our community is getting more diverse and we need to have something for everybody. So those are my kind of visions, both near-term and the long-term.
Thank you. Um, what are some of the priorities you would want to focus on for Battleground?
I kind of hinted at one of them. Uh, the roads would be a big one. Um, cause, uh, the, the city website says it maintains 75 miles of roads within our city limits. And with a million dollars this year set aside for pathway or a pavement restoration and refinishing, it's not going to go very far. Um, so that's one of the biggest priorities, I think. Um, yeah, I think that would be my, my number one priority, actually. Um, besides that, I mentioned the affordable housing, having something for everybody and having a plan that other people can get ahold of and decide to partake in, um, recognizing that this is a, a getting more diverse community. It's growing really fast. Costs are going up. And making some of the parks and some of the other areas that make this town great, um, keeping them in great condition and keeping them accessible and making sure that there is adequate planning for, um, all types of infrastructure, not just roads. I'm not a, not a road freak. I just happen to live in an older part of town and drive on all the older roads all the time. And so I notice those things. Um, yeah, I think that's, that's what I've got for those.
Hi, David. Eric here.
Hi.
Um, my question, how have you been involved with and given back to the city of Battleground?
Um, lots of ways. Um, my longest-standing volunteer gig is actually the foster parent. Uh, so my wife and I have additional children that live with us that are a part of our community, part of our family. Um, and we're here in this town, in the city limits. Um, beyond that, I've chosen to volunteer extensively with one of the local churches, uh, some of the church that meets at the community center. Uh, was involved in their technical, uh, really all things IT and tech, uh, for their church for several years. Um, working with the community center staff to understand what did they need, what did the church need? And how to, how to make that a, uh, the best relationship possible. Um, and then I've been, as I said, I've been plant, serving on the planning commission. It's been about a year and a month. Uh, working through some of the, uh, the middle housing policies, the, uh, planning and development, looking at some code updates, those kinds of things. So, um, and then in my spare time, I like to, uh, I like to fly fish and I like to be around outdoors. So, uh, those are, I'm, I'm always around the town, always around the area, but those are the ways I've been involved.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
What are the biggest challenges facing the city of Battleground?
There's not enough money. Um, and I have been studying the budget actually to make sure that I understood what I was saying before I said it. And it's amazing what the city's been able to do with the, the funds that are available. Um, because there aren't enough to go around, you know? I, I'm talking about streets. I, before I said that with clear conscience, I wanted to see, okay, well, are there other places perhaps that, um, that maybe things could, you know, what would you have to give away in order to spend more money on streets? What would you have to do without? Um, so. I'm sorry, I just drew a complete blank. Challenges, okay. Um, besides the things that I mentioned, uh, money is a big one. Um, and getting as much done as possible. Um, taking advantage of all the opportunities that are out there, especially in a shifting federal environment. And, uh, you know, unknown funding from all sources, it seems like. Um, but I, besides that, I think the, the livability and keeping our community something that people can afford to live in. Yeah, I was recently looking at the cost of new, some of the new apartments that have been built around town. Um, and they're far more than my first mortgage. Uh, so just for a, a one-bedroom apartment. And so I, I think that's a major challenge because we can't have the, the lovely community that we all enjoy if medium home per price is, you know, $500,000 and interest rates are what they are. So, um, I think of funding for the city, the infrastructure and then affordable, make, keeping it an affordable community while still having it be a nice community, I think are the big challenges. Thank you.
I have two, two parts here. Are there any regional issues or forms in which you have a particular interest or expertise as applicable to the city council? For example, transportation, water supply, human services, water quality, fiscal management, solid waste, parks and open space, et cetera?
Probably my most applicable skillset is I have a project management background. Um, worked with public entities around Washington to do energy savings projects. And so I worked with schools, uh, community colleges, state, local government, um, to do infrastructure projects and looking at what, what can be done within the funds that are available and what's going to make the most sense to, to accomplish. Um, so I think that skillset, that project management, the attention to detail that I learned from that, um, being able to be comfortable with the, the business aspects of the city or whatever other public entity I was working with. Um, and just understanding that everything has a purpose and was set in a way for some reason. You know, and sometimes you have to dig really hard to figure out what it is. But, um, that ability to, to study something, make sense of it, and then keep all of the balls in the air to move the goal, move the ball down the field, I think is, uh, probably my most applicable skillset for this position.
Okay. Then the second one, this is a, a pointed position. The term will expire in December, December 31st. So if appointed, are you planning on filing to run in May to retain this position?
Uh, yes, I would be.
Yeah, that concludes the formal, uh, interview and obviously you have some time left. So if you, um, want, if there's a question you wanted to, um, better expand upon, or if you just have a closing statement or something about yourself that maybe as you look back, you wanted to share, now would be the time, the floor is yours. And if not, that's okay.
Yeah, I, I, all I can say is that I really respect what each one of you do here, um, and the time and effort that this takes. I mean, we're, you know, you still have more interviews to go before other business still tonight. And, uh, appreciate the, the time and effort you guys put into our community. So thank you for this opportunity to interview and hope you have a great night.
Okay. Thanks, David. So I have 8:15? Or 8:16? And we'll bring out our fourth candidate. She was looking at you. Welcome, David. I got, uh, 8:17 or 8:16, something around those. We'll open the floor for your interview. Kind of went through it before, so nothing's changed. So, um, we'll just go ahead and start it. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and your background.
So my wife and I have been living in Battleground for about five years. Um, I, we came here when I retired from the software industry. Um, and, uh, we were looking for a really nice, small city to move to. Uh, my cousin lived near here, found Battleground, really loved it, loved the green outdoors, the fishing, the new, uh, places to explore. So we really liked it. Um, uh, I started doing public, uh, public things. Um, uh, probably a year into getting here and I worked with other groups on opposing the Chilachi Railroad and the F R D U still hate those things. Um, and, uh, now that I have the time and an increased focus, um, I'm looking forward to working on more city issues. So that's how I ended up before you guys today.
All right. I have the first question. Well, I guess the second question. Um, what is your vision for short-term and long-term growth in Battleground?
Uh, my vision, um, you know, I, for long-term growth, well, short and long-term are so hard to define. But, um, I'd like to see Battleground with more amenities. Um, you know, wouldn't it be great if we had a sports facility, more amenities for our, uh, festivals, for our farmer's market and our, um, and our, uh, uh, other festivals, uh, have places to put those. Um, and be able to attract more people with that, right? Um, you know, it just makes the city more enjoyable. I'd like to see it be even more walkable sidewalks and able to get around and keep our, our traffic low. Uh, because I think that's, um, you know, that's important to people who are commuting and people who live here, right? Um, I want to see costs kept down. I mean, if we, we need to keep costs kept down, we need to be efficient and intelligent how we spend our money. So we're able to dra- attract, you know, younger families, people in the middle class and be able to make sure we have a robust middle of, uh, the middle road for everybody in town. So we can all enjoy this place. Um, it needs to be a great place to work locally. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to attract more local jobs and not, um, be primarily a commuter for, you know, for Portland or other places around us. You know, be, be, be a whole thing ourselves, right? Um, and, uh, uh, increased visitation. Again, you know, I mentioned being able to, um, have some great amenities. It also draws employers here, right? We're able to get more local jobs. So that kind of is, you know, is a double, a double great whammy for us to be able to do. Um, I think we have to maintain our public safety, right? So I, I, we're, we're off to a great start. We have a, a wonderful chief, um, and that's come here and he has a lot of great plans. And we got new cars, we got, uh, body cameras. You know, I think the policing is excellent in this town. And so vision of keeping that up and having very reputation for a safe city is important.
Thank you for that. What are some priorities that you would have for Battleground?
Um, again, you know, my priority is increase the local employment. You know, we have our dollar corner thing going. So I'd really like to see more local jobs. Um, that's super important to me. I think it just makes the quality of life so much better in this town. I'm retired. But, you know, when you're on the council or when you're a citizen here, you want to look out for everybody, right? And you want to make sure that, um, people have a really good quality of life. And I think commuting is, is not the best quality of life. It's, it's better to not have that. Um, I, again, I talked about increased visitation, you know, we've got the West Commons hopefully open. You know, the East Main Improvement Project, um, you know, that's going to keep sales revenue here and allow us to even do more things for our city and make it even nicer. So I think those are, uh, those are great things that, um, are in my priority list. I talked about public safety already and it's going in a good direction. I guess the only other things I'd like to say about is keep going with that, but we've had a couple of, um, pedestrian deaths recently. So I think, you know, reviewing our speed limit, which I think, you know, the council's already looking at and looking at sidewalk safety is things that we, we need to constantly stay, stay on top of. And when we do anything new, we should bake safety right into that, right? It should always be a consideration. Uh, so I think those are my main priorities. And, uh, and I guess the last thing in safety is provide our youth plenty of opportunities, fund safe places to study, work, whatever, and keep them on a good path to citizenship, you know, to join the rest of us. So make sure our youth has, have places to go, fun things to do and, uh, you know, keep them safe as well.
Hi, David. Uh, Eric here. Um, my question to you, and I think you've spoke a little bit about this. Um, how have you been involved with and given back to the city of Battleground?
And, you know, like I said, I think, you know, primarily, you know, I moved here in the pandemic. So I had two years of, we had two years of pretty hard adjustment where I didn't get much done. Um, um, you know, I, I, uh, worked on the Chilachi Railroad a lot and, uh, spent a lot of time in making forums. We had a forum in this room for people and handing out leaflets at school. That, that was my main, that was the main thing I did. You know, lately I have, uh, started playing pinochle with the seniors at the senior center. So I really enjoy that. Um, and like I said, I'd like to do more things, you know, I, we were, I've been pretty busy, but I'm, my time's freeing up and I want to find more volunteer things to do. I applied at the food bank and so I'm looking for things. I'm a real technical guy and I'm really looking for, uh, organizations that want to use my technical skills, you know, and that seems to be a little tougher, but that's really what I'm interested in doing.
Welcome. What are the biggest challenges facing the city of Battleground?
Uh, probably the biggest challenge is growth. We're going to be approaching 37,000 people by the year 2020. And, um, you know, so many cities do growth the wrong way. Um, and really they, they end up with sprawl, they end up with, uh, environmental problems. So I think growth is probably the main one. I mean, we need to really pay attention to, uh, the, you know, to the, uh, statutes from the state. It's got 15 items in it, the Growth Management Act. And it, that just shows you that how complicated. And it, that just shows you that how complicated growth can really be. So I think that's a big challenge for us. Housing availability and costs. Our average housing price right now in Battleground is over $593,000. And that doesn't really give younger couples and younger people much of a place to slip into our community. It's hard. You know, I talked about this earlier as a way to avoid a homeless problem in the future. But whatever we can do to build housing at all stratas for all sorts of people, I think is probably one of the best things we can do. So, you know, work, work on anything we can do that, that improves availability and cost of housing. I mean, obviously that needs to be built, you know, in a good way as well. So it's lasting, right? And I think my, my last big challenge, which we just spent a whole bunch of time on was avoid a homeless problem like we see in some of the cities that are near us, right? Those are, it's very hard to solve. It costs a lot of money. I mean, Portland's spending $28 million on it this year. So we should, when we're doing the rest of our planning, plan so that we don't, so that it doesn't increase homelessness and hopefully it really keeps it down, right? So I think those are the biggest challenges in this city for me.
Thank you. I have two parts for you. Are there any regional issues or forms in which you have a particular interest or expertise as applicable to the city council? For example, transportation, water supply, human services, water quality, fiscal management, solid waste, parks and open spaces, et cetera?
So I actually, when I first moved here, I was tutoring my son and I finally ended up going to school with him. So he went through a water science class at Spokane Community College. So I just did all the classes and we worked on it, you know? It beat paying TAs for him and I found it really interesting. So then there was a lot of things on water quality. So, you know, I, I know some stuff about water quality after that. I, when I went through Battleground University, I talked with some of the city stuff, staff about water quality, you know, how do we test? And so I'm very interested in that stuff. I'm also very interested in fisheries because of that water temperature being affected by, being affected by our changing, you know, temperatures in town. So I'm very interested in that. And I had done some, I'd done a project with my, with my son where we looked at water temperatures in a river to see what the effect were on fish as the temperature went up and how to mitigate those, right? What do you do to mitigate those problems with planting or the things that, you know, not cutting down the, the wrong kind of trees, what you could do about that? So I do have a really good science program, background. I've studied chemistry. I have a lot of, you know, I, I've done a lot of work in software and I T. So I think I have a lot of technical skills and a science background that really makes, makes it easy for me to work on projects.
And the second part, this is a pointing position that will expire in December, December 31st. Are you planning on filing to run to retain this position if appointed?
Yeah, I think I would be willing to run.
Okay. That concludes the formal portion of the interview. So now's a chance, you have some time left. If there's anything, any of the questions you want to hit on again, anything you want to share that you didn't get a chance to share, the floor is yours.
So, I mean, I could talk a little bit about what I bring to this position from working in the software industry for 34 years. And one of the major ones is working effectively with people, teamwork, consensus building, and getting the best out of people who sometimes have divergent views. I've worked with, I owned a team that was 53 people at one point. That's, you know, that's super challenging. And I've worked down to teams with 10 people. So I'm really used to working with lots of people. I've worked with every single kind of person you can imagine and a few that we probably couldn't even imagine. I've got an analytical approach to the way I think, you know? I, I did data collection and analysis in my last job. So I like, I like to do things in a data-driven way. You know, I, I feel like you get a, you know, a really good idea of what's going on. I consider all aspects of the problem, like analyze pros and cons. And I try to remember in all of this that perfection is really the enemy of the good sometimes. So, you know, you really have to look at not trying to find the perfect solution and wasting too much time on that, but finding a good solution. I told you I, before I have a, a science background, you know, I've done data analysis. I've done software. I have an I T background. I've studied water science, which included some fisheries work. And I have a good track record of success. I've worked on and completed many, many, many complex projects with, with small and large teams. I've worked in aerospace, finance, mobile phones, and the weirdest one, I T on the I T on, in the cloud. So I think I understand, you know, a lot of modern concepts. And I guess to summarize it all, you know, kind of in Battleground, we're all in this together to work on making this the best city ever. And so if you guys find it prudent to select me today, I'll work really hard with each and every one of you and with everyone in the city to get this thing done. So I appreciate your time tonight and that's kind of a summary of myself, so.
Thank you, David. I'll close the floor for your interview then. I have 8:29, clerk. So I will say this before we go into session, you four are going to make it really hard. So those were really good interviews, some high quality interviews, some good stuff. So pursuant to R C W 42 dot 30 dot 110, parentheses, one, parentheses, H. City Council will enter an executive session to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. The executive session will last, I'm thinking 20, you want 30? We'll start with 20 minutes commencing at 8:32, 8:35. And if we have to extend, we'll come out and extend. So 20 minutes commencing 8:35, ending at 8:55 is the current plan. Thank you.
So in my questions to all of the candidates, I said the term ended December 35th. Yeah, December 35th. Yeah, it's the four days after. Um, no, December 31st, the uh, the position actually would be vacated on November 25th. Once the certification of the election happens this year. So as an appointment.
So if if you run, if somebody runs against you and you lose that that's but if you win, then obviously it goes on. So. All right. So this brings us to the uh, filling of the city council vacancy again. I know I've said it before, I'll say it again. The quality of candidates was astounding. Uh, I hope all of you stay super involved. Um, where wherever you landed, whether you got an interview, whether you didn't get an interview, um, whether you. Whatever your level of involvement was up to this point, I hope it just continues to increase from this point forward. So we need more people involved. We need more people who love battleground to take the time to help love battleground with us all. So. Thank you again for uh, putting yourself out there. It's not easy sitting in that little chair. Um, so we do appreciate the time and effort you all put in. So thank you. With that, I will now open the floor for the nomination of candidates for appointment to city council position four. Each nomination requires a second. Council members uh, may not make more than one nomination unless the nominee clines a nomination or there is no second. A majority vote of four council members is required to fill the vacancy. Voting shall be by written ballot unless there is only one nominee. Voting shall not take place until after all nominations have been made and I've closed the floor for nominations. The city clerk will then publicly announce results. The applicant receiving the majority votes will be your new council member. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations.
All right, um, I nominate Jeannie Kipers to be position four.
I'll second. I probably don't need one.
You do.
Okay, then I second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second for Jeannie Kipers by council member Overholz or second by Davis. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? I will then close. The floor for nominations. And since there's only one nomination, we'll take a uh, voice vote. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
The results are the vote for council member position number four are Jeannie Kipers.
Congratulations, Jeannie. Are we doing the oath office right now? So right, so we'll ask you to come up and uh, we're going to give you the oath right now and seat you for the rest of the meeting. So, hope you were, yeah.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeannie Kipers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I'm a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
And will, to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skill and ability.
Truly faithfully and diligently.
Truly faithfully and diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of.
City council position number four.
City council position number four.
In and for.
And for.
The city of battleground.
The city of battleground.
County of Clark.
County of Clark.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law. Thank you.
You have to sign real still.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Sign here and sign here.
Do you want my whole legal name or?
Um, sure.
Okay. I'll just do it like this.
You would sign here? And then I will complete this. We'll go ahead and uh, take this, take that off.
I'm not sure if that's easier than a campaign and election or not. She gets the better voting power. Okay, that brings us to administrative reports, any administrative reports this evening?
Just one brief report, Director Hursig is going to give on project.
I'm just going to give an update on the median on Southwest Twenty that people are asking about. So we've talked to them, they're going to be putting up additional signage at the median. And then the asphalt paving, which will fix the issue, should happen in a week or two. During this time of year, the all the asphalt plants in the area closed down for their annual maintenance. So they got kind of hung up with it. The way they did the curbing, they needed to get that done before the paving and just happened to get caught by the closures, so. Once they open back up and the weather permits, they'll get that paved and. Then they'll do all the final signing and that sort of thing, so that should address the issue.
Uh, thank you for looking at, and we also talked about North Twentieth where that daycare went, or the child care center and the cold, could you maybe.
Yeah, um, so during construction, it's pretty typical to put down cold patch asphalt. While you're doing it, and then after you're done with the project, obviously before you open. You come in and mill the road up as needed and then put the permanent asphalt down, so. The all the, what you see there is temporary, it won't be that way before it opens, so.
Okay, that brings us to council communications, and I think there's a few tonight, so. Please. Chime in. Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to thank all of the candidates that we had for this open seat. And appreciate the willingness to step up and to serve their community. It's not an easy thing to do. It tends to kind of go in cycles. Back in two thousand ten, I sat through an interview process, doing the same thing, we had fifteen people interviewed that night. For one spot, and it seems like maybe it's just the way the country's gone and people have gotten less involved. But it was, it was great to see us get, I think we had nine, eight, eight applications. And four that came through the interview process, and it's great to see those people wanting to step up and continue to serve and. And to put themselves out there, and I appreciate that, I know council does. And would encourage you to continue to do so because. Change is good, and we have always positions that are going to be up for election or open. Positions on different boards and commissions that we have, that are great places for people that want to have the opportunity to have a say and serve. And and have a little bit of input on how we run the city, so thank you for doing that tonight, thank you for the. The spouses and the significant others that went through the process as well, it's not a, not an easy process.
Thank you, I likewise would like to thank all the candidates, it's very difficult to sit up there and you all did a fantastic job, it was very difficult. And again, love seeing that there are so many people who are invested in our city and. Want to do hard work, so thank you for that. On council related, I wanted to ask if there is anything that has been planned in regards to. We talked our last meeting about C-Trans and the vote that's coming up. And whether or not we wanted to discuss a resolution, and so I just kind of wanted to get a feel for, we don't, we only have two. Council dates left before the eleventh, so I didn't want it to fall to the wayside, so if any knowledge would be appreciated.
So to that end, we did reach out, we had staff reach out for the study session coming up on the eighteenth. And we have six o'clock, but do you think maybe five thirty, I don't, we can talk about that, so I B R, which is the. Large replacement and C-Trans will both be here, there will be some additional people on the panel to help. Answer questions, I see this as a fact finding mission, if you will, to get council up to speed, to ask the questions you want to ask. So that you can give the C-Trans representatives, which are council member Ferrer and myself, the direction that we need for the votes coming up. So after that study session, you know, that would probably maybe there'll be more clarity on council. Cause I don't know about customer Ferrer, but it's, there's a lot of new information and a lot of historical information on this project. That is really difficult to wrap your head around in a short amount of time, so. Prepare your questions, what you'd like to see, you're welcome to send those in advance and we can get those to the people who will be presenting. If there's something that you really want answered and that you need to know, so I would, I would suggest that as well. So if we want, we can try to move that up to five thirty, but right now we have the study session at six. Are we okay with six? Okay, all right, we'll keep it at six.
Unless we can move it up to five thirty and then dinner is provided. No, I'm just kidding, six o'clock is fine. Are we good, floor open? Again, I just, eight people coming out and to apply for an open position is to me phenomenal, that there's eight people willing to step out and. Take one for the team and serve. The citizens of battleground, that they care enough about battleground to get involved. So congratulations to the four people that made it up to interview. Myself in two thousand twenty-three ran for an open position. I applied, I did not get nominated for interviews. And then I decided to go ahead and file and run for candidacy. And I won, obviously, I'm sitting up here, so I would encourage everybody that's sitting out there that got to interview, or even people that didn't. That if you truly feel so led to get involved, then file and run for the four open positions that will be coming up this election. I can tell you it's a lot different process to fill out an application and apply than it is to run a campaign, so just be prepared for that. It is. As nerve wracking and exciting as the interview process, but a little bit more daunting and timely, so and costly. But congratulations to you, Jeannie, but also congratulations to the other three applicants, you guys. Did a phenomenal job and made it a very, very tough decision for us up here, so thank you.
So I want to thank everyone that came today, I appreciate you putting in the time and effort to apply for the vacancy. Learned a lot about you guys, I'm inspired, really appreciate your time and. Welcome, Jeannie, to city council, I look forward to working with you.
And I'll be the last counselor up here to welcome you up here, and also thank you guys for all three of you other candidates for coming up here and. Your willingness to do this, it was difficult, it really was, I loved hearing all of your guys' passions and your concerns. That you shared and that you were willing to be a voice for the citizens and again, hope to see that. You guys would be willing to run, I think it would be even for, you know, as hard as it was for us, I think it would also be just as hard for the citizens. You know, to to choose you, so I mean. Yeah, I saw, I hope to see you guys run and have a good evening, thank you again.
So I just wanted to give a couple of updates, well, first I wanted to apologize to Alicia because when we did the Jeff Chris, so the guy that walked around the world, I forgot to thank her for all the hard work she put into that and and the team put into that. That was a great event, it was really cool, thank, we had, that's member Davis was there. And we walked with him, I don't think we made the whole circumference in our little jaunt, but we're on our way. But Alicia did so much work on that, it's just great, those community events, everybody that came here that loves battleground, it's those type of community events that really keep us in our spirit, so. My my bad of not thanking Alicia during that. I also wanted to share with council. That I I might have wasted staff's time in talking to WASDOT. About the speed limit and the process therein, so we did get a meeting set up. Mark was in it, Chris was in it, I was in it, about what it would take, is it possible to lower any speeds on the state highway? Essentially, takeaway from that was, they will do a speed survey, and by the end of March, we should have some sort of path forward for five oh two. For five oh three, I think they're more waiting for the roundabouts, that as Mark has told us several times. You can put any speed limit sign up you want, it's not going to change the speed. Behavior unless you have a lot of police presence out there, and we don't have enough mannequins for the roads that would need it. Or actual officers as well, so. You know, I I was just super impressed with WASDOT, obviously, our team has been communicating with them. I was not aware, my bad, but thank you for that meeting and WASDOT was great, I was, I was really surprised. And then finally, the last thing. There's a weather person in battleground. Not doing well, or you know, had had some medical issues, but I was trying to get him to come to council to testify. About the dark sky initiative and light pollution and essentially. Changing our code so that new streetlights don't. Emit any light pollution, so I was curious if there is. Enough support on council to have staff look into a code change. You have to, into the mic. So. I would like to see if staff could. Look at code so that when a new neighborhood goes in, the new light posts for taps are part of that new neighborhood and going forward.
Mark, just a question for you, when when we went to, when we had the P U D come in and change out all the lighting to go to the L E D lighting. There was a option to put. Dimmers, right, to be able to, there there's options to reduce your power and dim those lights at certain hours so that though. We don't have as much light pollution.
Yeah, there, there's several solutions, so there's new technology and I'll say new, but there's some cities that have used it, but. It essentially gives you control over each individual light, so you can have motion set it off, you can have hours of day. You know, lower it, those sorts of things, so yeah, that technology does exist.
Cause I think that's something that maybe. It would, it it could affect. Not just the new, new stuff, right, because we we went through and changed everything, we do have some that fell under that weird, they'd already submitted plans and. And so they got to put in the old lighting, but it could be something that we look at from a standpoint, citywide. Or different areas of the city where we can adjust that through that, correct?
And what other thing I like about that technology is the light actually tells you when it's burnt out, so you don't have to wait for citizens to identify it, it sends you a message that. Hey, I'm out, come fix me, and so, yeah, all the other things that you're talking about that it does, that's another feature to it.
So I think that would be a good thing, i- if we're going to go that way, is to. To see, I I think we we got a T I B grant, didn't we, to do.
Yeah, we got the relight grant for.
So see if there's other grants or options, because it's power savings, it's, you know, like you said, light pollution, those type of things that we can, we can reduce.
So I I believe cities have gotten grants for that, I was talking to our city manager about that, and there are potential grants out there for there, so. I would just like to see what staff can come up with on that, I don't have any particular policy or in mind, I was just hoping to see what. What could be worked up, so, and I would encourage, as we move forward, we have pretty big code. Rework coming up, we hit it quite a bit, so as you go through the code, I would encourage council to. Find that code that you want to add, subtract, delete, divide, multiply, whatever it may be. Now would be the time to change those policy decisions and allow staff to work on that so that when it comes to us later in the year. It could all be done at the same time. With that, that's all I have, welcome, Jeannie. It's nice to have seven up here again, and our next meeting is February eighteenth, the study session is at six P M, regular meeting at seven. I have nine eighteen, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.